Okay, I'm gonna call meeting to order.
Thank you, Starling.
Here.
John.
Here.
Andy.
Here.
And, yeah.
Okay, Sam with the clutch. Okay, you guys will converge while we do vouchers? Which ones are?
So. There's a third dollar.
Yeah, I know. I don't feel like. I really don't know. I lose uh. The first one there.
Nice.
The mercy is like. The chair is not. I have I have a good work. You know, you're six thousand dollars. These are usually.
Yeah. No, that's. It's a short amount of it's.
Well, I don't.
Part of it now. He sort of went out and said. He's a age. Yeah. Yes, sir.
That's what I'm saying. I have. This is a search she had seen another very long. He got through and he said, oh, you know. Money inside. Well, it's needed. I've never seen anything like it.
Yeah, well. Thank you. I mean, that because nothing ever.
But this is another person or something. Yeah, yeah, she might. She now tells me the word to me. And she stole.
Yeah. There are those. Just.
Oh, this is. Yeah, I promise. We're like this guy. He knows. They're so long. The thing. I hope he has nothing. It's very. It's very good. Just by what rules they need.
I see. No, no, no.
She know. Very much. Well, that's all. It was done.
So. My. So I understand.
Yeah. Yeah. He is just like, wouldn't it be nice to be married?
No. We're glad. The thing you have. I don't. Won't get all. Pretty much.
Gee, those are. So she's got. Something.
Sorry.
For the. All.
So. So.
Uh. We know.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I bet they saw. Well, I'm. Always. Okay. That's. Oh, sure. It's. By every. Yeah. We can tell her.
Something.
Back there.
It's. The king. Who is very. So much like. The. Very. Sure.
You don't need.
Yeah. Twenty five pounds.
She was.
Yeah.
At least she's waiting for the weather to get all. Pretty much. So it's. I deserve. I would say. You.
No. I'm not. And then. I'm. That. That. Never. He's just.
So.
That. Actually. I know. There's. People sound. Yeah. I'm sure. Very sad. You don't can say. You don't get. When you smiles.
Oh, yes. Yeah. Yeah. They are. They didn't want to get.
So. The holdings. I don't mind.
No, I. Certainly. I think it's on the air.
What?
I stood by. I said, I would just say. Well, there's. Smell this around. It's like. Which. Look at it. So you can't stop and. And. I understand. That. That's.
Really.
Yeah. Yeah. I was. There in the. Pretty. Yeah. That. Don't. That is. Well, yes. Very good. I told you. The biggest. But the girls. When I said. No, no, no. She gets it down. So. She.
Should be.
So. It was.
Yeah. It must be.
Interesting.
She's not. She wanted to. Tell me.
Yeah.
It just. I don't want to. The. Twelve. She's.
I will. Be.
I'm.
I'm. Like.
That's. Then. We're. You know. There's something. There. It's. So. I feel. That. You're there. 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 Right. The. They. You know.
So. How. One. One. For. That. I. I think. It's. And. For. You're. Not.
Right. Right.
Well. Nice.
Right.
Look, you want to be. In your. Family. About this. Yes. It's. That. 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 Will. Have. Some. Here. Very. Who's.
I. Yeah. Yeah. I'm. Ten.
No. Pretty much. She's.
I'm. Just. Still. They. Well, just. There. I mean.
Yeah. Great. We've. Had. The. Most. Yeah. No. Well, you drive. Here.
I think. I need.
And. All. That's. Going. Fifty. Percent. Because. You're. Always. You. 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 Let's. I think. Thanks. And. You. Don't. Right. Right. Well, sure. I'm. Yeah. I know. Well, there's. Kind of. Practically. A lot. Of course. And I really. So really. The. True. Yeah. It's all. Where's. Now. The. Pad. Where. That's. A little. He. He. Actually.
Thank you. Oh.
Or. I know. We. 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 Wouldn't. Have. The. On. Watch. He. And. This. He. He.
Now. I. I.
Why? He says. And. Pretty. Good. And we. Have. Actually. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
She's. She's. Actually. She wants. Actually. They. I'm. Do. I'm. I'm. She's. 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 She's.
Press issues. Yeah.
And.
And. I'm. Just. Please.
Well. That's.
Other side.
And. I think. That. For. Sure. Well. We. Know. Well. And. After. We. Have. A. Question. He. Actually.
Yeah.
Obviously. They. They're. 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 But. They're. They're. Taking. One. Three. Three. They're. They're. Like. Here. We're. Back. They're. 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 They're.
If they take. They're. Oh.
That's. What. You. Just. See. That.
That. We. Then.
Yeah. You. Yeah. Right. But. You. Want. To. That. Yeah. You. Don't. You. Don't. You. Just. Like. Wow. Okay. And.
Yeah. Yeah. We. Heard. Yeah. But. This. Was. So. Each. That. Is. I know. What's. It. I. Wish. You know. So. My. Own. As. This. I. I'm. I'm. Just. You. May. You. When. I. Swear.
There. So.
So. I don't know. What's. It. That. I. 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 I don't. Want. To. Say. So. Don't. Really. No. I. But. You. Why? You. So. The. Question. They don't. Remember. The. Sure. Yeah. Which. So. We. Can. Go. We. About. He. He. Really. Do. Jacob. And. So. She. We. Really. But. You. Don't. Answer. We. Come.
Wow.
No, I don't. She. 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 Yeah.
All right. The line.
Yeah. She. Now. She. Act. Like. I'm. Looking. At. It. With. It. Something. About. It. And. She. Teases. Or. What. Did. We. Got. So. It's. I don't. It's.
Jack. For. So. I'm. Like. Somebody. Like. Yes.
Call. There. She. She. Again. They. Probably. I'm. I'm. Not. Pretty. Good.
Yeah. It's. My. Mom. I was. Very.
Tell me. Tomorrow. So. We. Had. A. Water. County. Right. Don't. Have. To. Do.
Like. You. Will. Park.
Yeah. Yeah. About. Doing. Where. I'm. But. That. Will. Make. Them. And. You. But. More. Much. So. You. Know. That. I'm. And. So. We. Are. Landing. Up. And. She. Wants. To. Wear. Out. That. That. You're. Turn. And. That. You're. All. About. Your. Job. Is. This. Yeah. She. Does. I'm. I'm. Wanting. To. Say. Thank you. And. There. And. We. Can. Do. And. From. The. Action. I'm. Yeah. Right. I'm. Calling. You. Um. Now. I'm. All. Right. So. This. Good. Also. You. Right. You. Right. This. Is. Someone. That. You. Okay. But. I'm. Not. Whatever. It's. More. On. The. Most. Worries. People. But. We. Just. Said. You're. The. None. The. Ones. Who. You. Were. You. Check. You. All. This. Was. What?
With. Your. House. You. Got. Your. Own. Own. Own.
I'm. The. One. Every time. We. Just. I don't. What is. That. Thirty. Four. Most. Things. You. Want. Sure. I. I. Like. Well. I don't. I'm. Really. I'm. About. Time. This. And. I'm. Like. I need. To. He. Didn't.
Silence of time remaining for his or her comments. After a final warning, if the speaker refuses to step down, the chairperson can request. That a police officer or peace officer remove the individual from the meeting room. Okay, privilege of the floor. Lee.
Be sure so. I'll make it an update on the water district two.
We will be doing that in the committee updates. Anything else, okay. All right, department reports.
Nothing but a hammer.
Um, Suzie. Your first up.
First thing I did a presentation at the Sterling Historical Society and Sterling and twenty eight boldos. Uh, I did a presentation on. March second. And Sterling and abolition. Then another presentation at the Fairhaven Art Center on. August ninth and homemade heroes and I concentrated on women. From the town of Sterling that were homemade heroes, including Belle Kirk and the next door to the town hall. Uh, Reba Bradley Turner. Um, Dr. Barbara Grace. Mildred Forsco and Muriel Rasback who all contributed. To the town of Sterling in some way or another. And quite greatly. And in terms of presentations, uh, the play that I wrote. Will be presented on Friday and Saturday nights at the Fairhaven Art Center, the story of Val Kurt Ray. Then for the past four or five months, I've been working on Sterling and especially the one on eleventh regiment. During the Civil War and I think I've finally almost exhausted all our documents after four months worth of sending. The gentleman some stuff, now I find out that he's might come up and visit in September. And also another gentleman, Bill Benison is his name, he's from Boston Spa and I'm still looking for the. Railroad bonds information, but I found something today that might help that the town of Sterling was in the midst of a lawsuit. Uh, by some individuals and also the railroad for non-payment on those bonds and I'm trying to figure out exactly. What went on and I'm going to have to learn some more legal terms and exactly how the New York State. Court system works. To be able to figure it all out, but I I'll get it. And then uh, certain people have called um, Tom Wilkinson and the Rasmussen and King families from Sterling Center. Uh, Lynn Brinkley from Washington State and she came all the way here to visit. And the Kelly Baker, Beersley, Chafin and Benjamin and Roberts families. Uh, Brad Brad and Brando and Birch and Harrington. That's it.
Okay. Becky assessment.
Um, wanted to let everyone know that on September ninth, we'll be having a public meeting here if anyone wants to find out more about the upcoming rate assessment. I plan on having representative from New York State. The director of rural property for Cuban County. The town supervisor and so hopefully any questions that people have, I'll have a PowerPoint to give you some background. Of what's going on, you know, and and maybe put the town. Be able to answer any questions.
And you said that September.
September ninth six P M sixteen.
Okay. June or the planning board, anything?
We're still busy.
Historical Society, Lee.
Yes, uh, next Sunday is our last Sunday. We'll be open. For the year. Well, we'll be open for by appointments only. Uh, the next program, it was August twenty seventh. It's uh, League. Uh, she's going to be speaking and talking about. A girl and glass. And. Our ornaments, that would be NASA's home company that have been ordered and it would be also, we're taking uh. Uh, pre-orders, you're from the country orders.
For ornaments, yes. All right. Okay, uh, committee reports, all right, here's your update, Lee. Water District two. So I'm gonna give the update on this tonight, um, because uh, we've had. Quite a bit happened in the last month. When I say quite a bit happen, I don't mean progress. So. Uh, we've, we've had C two A E here, um, along with Kevin. Our, our um, attorney. Uh, as well as uh. Doug Miller. Um, who, who represents. Who, who is consulting for the town. Right now, we have gotten the drawings back from all of the agencies with comments. What happens is those comments, each agency makes comments and then C two A E has to take those comments. Make the design changes to the tower and resubmit them. Tomorrow is the uh, meeting for C two A E's engineers to finalize those and send those back to the agencies. Uh, which is the final step, uh, to show that everything is complete. And then um. Once that happens, uh, we will be going out to bid, in the meantime, we also. Um, have to submit our paperwork, uh, for. Uh, extending the funding with USDA. And uh, which is handling the installation. Portion of the um, Water District two. That's due uh, in September, we are. Way behind on the paperwork that is supposed to be submitted, um. That is not due to the town, um, we were given the paperwork, it was supposed to have been submitted. Month ago, month and a half ago, two months ago, actually, um, and none of it was completed. Even though we had already supplied everything that they had asked us for, um, they were supposed to be completing it and they didn't complete it. So then that turned it back over to us and Tanya. And Pat Crane have been completing all of this paperwork that was supposed to be completed over six month time in two weeks. Um, and we are under pressure to get that done, keep the funding. Um, again, that, that was all stuff that C two A E was supposed to have had done. And told us was done. You know, completed and then they sent us back a file with all of the documents that we sent them for support. And nothing of the documentation that needed to be turned in, filled out, uh, and told us. That's our problem. But um, so we have been working on that. I spoke with uh, the project manager at four forty-five tonight, he knew that we had a meeting tonight. He was supposed to supply me with a update for this meeting, I spoke to him at four forty-five, he called me. Said I'm sending it to you right now, as I look at my phone right now, I still don't have it. Um, so that's where we're at, um. We have the meeting, I, we're not a part of this internal meeting tomorrow, but we're supposed to get the results. Uh, from that. And um. We have to have the, the, the most crucial thing is to have. The paperwork submitted and in order to get that extension, we have to have this out to bid in September, which is what. This work with this meeting is, once the tower gets approved, we can go out to bid. So that all has to happen. Uh, by September, well. By the end of September to be out to bid, but USDA needs to see that we're out to bid in order to extend the funding. So if we don't get out to bid, we will not get an extension of the funding. C two A E has been told that, we have been told that. Yeah, our attorney has been told that, so um. Right now, we are just pushing to get it. Across the finish line, um. And that's not even the finish line, that's just to get it out to bid, um, which is an important hurdle, because then. Uh, we then will. Go out to bid to manage contractor, contractors and uh, firms that will actually be doing the work and putting shovels in the ground and getting the water set up. Uh, so that is my update right now, um. I will have a further update, uh, after. I get an update from tomorrow's meeting, which will be Wednesday unexpected. Um, but we have our regular status call on Friday. I know everybody is wondering, but that is the extent of what I. Know is to where we're at right now, um. And. It's not in any way where we want to be, that's for sure, and and I agree with that. Um, um, we're, we're doing everything we can. Uh, to. Do this, uh, however. Um. One thing that's come to light in working with the USDA and and. Another federal agency involved. Uh, is we're one of four towns right now that are in this exact situation with C two A E. So.
Can the denominator is?
Um, so, uh, that's the update. Of where we're at.
Can, can I ask some, make sure I'm understanding what you said, okay, when you said we, can you define we's?
We as in.
Andrew Joyce.
As in what part of we?
Oh, okay, you said we have been meeting with C two.
The, the committee.
So, so the, um, that would be Andrew Joyce.
Right.
Pat Crane.
Yep.
Pat Gurren.
Pat has not been, no.
His, does he know about the meetings?
We, we have, we.
Okay, am I talking to Karen or Andy?
You're talking to me, me, we have. We have had some challenges with meetings, yes.
Okay.
And Tanya has been a part of those too.
Okay. And when you said that you've been having meetings, you mentioned, have you had meetings with C two A E? Kevin Cox, Doug Miller, at the same time?
Kevin Cox and C two A E were here in the building.
Okay.
Um, Doug Miller has been joining our weekly calls.
Okay. And to make sure I understand, the paperwork. That needs to be submitted is about the tower? Just.
No, it's about the funding for the whole project.
Okay. Okay, USDA, okay, and, okay, so it's the whole project. Okay.
You have two different sources of funding, you have USDA. And then you have um. P F C. Which is the other federal program, P F C is for the tower, USDA is for the actual. Implementation of the water.
Water tower, my time, at one time I thought it was ready, is it through the E F?
E F C.
Yeah, but it's ready money?
Yeah.
So that's still a consideration.
Yes, but we also have to renew that at the same time and so under the same restrictions.
Okay, so if I'm asked, I wanna be able to. Paraphrase what I've heard you say, to make sure I'm understanding when people say this is status.
Yeah.
Okay, and I have like a list of like thirty-two things to go back, and then we just got another one too. And that's to go to, uh, to. And then.
Yeah.
Is that USDA?
Yeah.
Well, so we've been chasing everything. Right, yeah, no, I'm not putting it on you, uh, as I've been very vocal about my concerns with C two A E.
Well, it's, yeah, and um. We will, I mean, I'll start taking attendance while the meeting, so that you know who's there. But. Okay. All right, uh, anything else?
You, do you take minutes with the meeting? Notes, nothing?
They do.
They means?
Uh, C two A E, that, that takes.
Okay, and then they give you the?
They email out the, just an email. The updates here. And then we get a formal update. Like this, this is two weeks old, but this is what I was hoping for for tonight.
Right. Is that, did we ever get the one that's two weeks old?
This is it, now it's two weeks older than that. This is what I was waiting for for tonight.
They sent that.
They sent this by mistake.
Yeah, they sent it to me with all the paperwork, when they were sending me, like, they were uploading me with all the documents. Right. And when I was going through them, finding everything that was not even filled out, that was in the mix. And so I went to, I brought it to Andy, cause. Right, 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 so my question, cause I've been asking the written. Update report from C two A E. Um, and it sounds like there was one given two weeks ago, is that public?
I'll give you these if you want, they're not public, but I mean, they're documents that are, they're C two A E's documents.
They're the email to.
They're on a shared drive that we download.
Okay, just wanted.
Yeah.
We can have access to that.
I will give these.
Because they get questions if seniors meeting.
But not all of this is necessarily public information, this is.
Like update people were.
I can make copies of those.
Because that's what I'm being asked, I as a board member should be able to answer that question. Very simply, I would think. I mean, I was on a water committee before, so maybe people still think. That's the same thing, I don't know, I just don't like not having answers for the general public. When they see me as a board member.
Okay, sorry, we'll get you the progress reports.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I'd appreciate that, because I was assuming there was nothing inviting.
Did, we get these sporadically.
Right, but I've not seen them.
Okay, I'll give you all, there's twelve of them.
Oh, that'd be perfect.
They go all the way back to twenty twenty.
Might wanna find out if it's affordable.
They're not public information, that's why I don't, that's why I haven't been.
Right, I'm just saying.
They're, they're C two A E's internal documents, we're, I mean, we're downloading them from their system.
But it's progress reports about the.
Yes.
Yeah, and we didn't get them all every week, they don't give to us when we demanded them over and over again, and they gave us like. Ten at one time or something, maybe eleven, so they sent that all to us.
And then this one was accidental.
Yeah, yeah, I would appreciate that, because my frustration has been that there's been no written. Report update, and yet the town's been getting them. So.
We have not been getting them, we got them once, and they were like ten at once, and then this one was sent accidentally.
Okay. If that, that'd be great.
I will, I will share them all.
Thank you.
And they're actually, I believe they're. On that laser fish and uh, water. Oh, you don't, we don't have laser fish up yet. Um, I will share them, yeah.
Can we see what information is calling and what is not that on these?
I mean, that's, that's why I don't wanna share this publicly, because there's attorney information in here. And that's why it's not going out publicly.
Right, but the clerk can find out what can be redacted and what parts we can see, right?
Yes.
I hope so.
So I guess my question to that would be, we're still paying. C two A, C two A E as consultants, right? Are we not?
They are the project manager.
The project manager, so therefore, I would think C two A E could send us out a progress report.
That is.
Monthly or whatever. But consistently. So we have information to give the general public and including ourselves.
We've been asking.
Fire, find somebody that will.
Okay, but here's, 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 okay, that's an easy solution, right? And don't think I haven't, no, I know, I know, but it's a solution, but then you fire them. Now you're back at square one, you don't have a project manager, you don't have, and then.
We have other people on the outskirts.
But they can't come in and pick up the work, they, they. So they can't come in and just pick up the project right where it is, because C two A E, they would take all of that information, they own that information right now.
We don't, we didn't pay for it, I'm confused.
No, we own the documents and everything, but if they walked off the job, then somebody new has to come in and completely get into. Like, learn everything that C two A E has done so far, pick up the project and we only have this month.
We have a short notice, a short distant term, we have more time to do so, that'd be easier, but trying to have somebody come in and. Figure everything out.
We should cable this. We would, if, if we, if we let them go right now, we're out of all that money and everything.
We have to talk about it. Yeah, it's been discussed.
I mean, the grant money would be gone. Cause I mean, but that's what we're trying to say, no.
Does C two A E move it?
No, it's uh, rural development, federal government. So we'll get you guys the progress reports.
All right, uh, who has your question, sir, Suzie? You ask a question?
What's up?
Who is responsible for that, that happens? We lose that grant money. And we have to pay that back.
We don't, we haven't used it.
Well, they spent what, eight hundred thousand dollars or so?
Right, then we are responsible.
The who, the town?
Yes.
That's how wide?
Yes. Okay. Right.
We can keep going, the Yankees aren't playing tonight. Okay, well, good evening, and first of all, you got the report. Annual report on that, and uh, what I'll do is, uh, again, thank, thank the town board for what they. Sit down for better and try and end our seniors. The reputation that you guys. Davis, the decorations are good, the cupcakes are good. And a good job on the hat. And I'll be good, seriously, thank you for that. And uh, that's about it, except we got, the office for the aging is going to be here in this building on uh, August twenty seventh. And uh. I, I'm not sure which group is gonna be here, but uh, they'll be taking walk-ins and appointments. Everybody can. They can talk about everything, it would be going out at the office, I need a tactics, they want to commit to. They've been here last year. And they do this, they get, they go, I went into the county, the, the radio is in September, you think they're. Just to get to the people who can't always. Get to the office itself. And I talked to you about uh, your old grandparents, you got that email, yeah? I'll tell you that, that's one of my pet projects, I'm happy.
That looks like a good program.
I, I think once it gets off the ground, and it gets up on it, and people understand what they have to do. It's not that kind of good. Especially when you, you're going through the office for the aging, all this is a phone call. And hail down there, take care of everything else, and they saw the arrangements and. You might then, just if you're qualified.
Yeah, uh, what Frank's talking about is, there's a program that's newly developed, it's basically like an Uber for the elderly. Through the Office of the Aging, so. You get an Uber to your appointment through the Office of the Aging, when you're done, you call back Office of the Aging, they get an Uber back for it.
But I think if anything else, I'll interrupt in a minute.
Yeah, okay.
But yeah, again, thanks, I wanna thank the town board for all they do for our seniors, really great. Thank you in better ways for all you do, you guys should go up and. We have a good time, we argue, but we have a good time. You don't know, you're just. Right, that's what I tried to tell her. She says, here, I have a Jenny and Chad.
All right, zoning, show her.
Um, yes, we are meeting, uh, spent a couple of times a month. And the focus has been on short-term rentals, paying attention to what's going on with the village. The village is, um, my understanding is holding a. I understand it's a, an informational meeting, but I heard someone called a public hearing, but. The planning board chair, uh, village planning board chair called it a, an informational meeting, August twenty eighth. Um, that, yeah, August twenty eighth. At six P M at the, I think it's at the fire hall, the community hall. Um. So, and again, uh, it's, it sounds like, uh, getting the information about the status of the proposed. Local law for the village apparently even regarding short-term rentals. And answering questions. Um, for the public, so again, it's a public meeting, I believe it's a joint meeting with the village planning board and the village board of trustees. So. Um, it seems like they're trying to move forward with that, and we're paying attention to that. The other thing, the zone information was spending chunk, chunk of time line, and that is, um, the E code three sixty. It's been a challenge. Just understanding what the questions are they're asking, um, so. We'll do the best we can, and Lisa said the deadline is like in September twenty fourth, I think it is. Uh, we are on question number, it took us the last meeting, just one question. That we covered, question nine out of forty. So. It's.
How long do you have to do it?
The deadline is September twenty fourth, I think the bottom line will, I would say what we'll end up doing, unless we can. Find a way to move through these more quickly, um, we'll probably say adopt as is, and then we'll work on it. After it's adopted, just to keep. The ball in motion, so. Okay, so any questions about that zone information for permanent goals, and I do believe that the village did make the commitment. To um, to work with Granicus. Contract with Granicus for, um, the data collecting module. So I believe that was officially. Uh, adopted, and then the third thing had to do with, um. Let's throw in a blank, I know that, I could, I could reach out to. Judy Dunaway and just say, is there any, can I, can I ask permission? Because I assume she was at the village meeting, if there's anything officially that about that, short-term rentals.
Not, although what's already been presented, I mean, y'all should go. To the hearing or.
Right.
Or the hearing or meeting next.
Right, do you, what, what is it being called, it's gonna be advertised, is it being?
There was a question over that, and I'm not sure how the legal counsel.
Right. Oh, that was number three, and the third one was that they also are contracting with an attorney. That worked with the, hmm, I think it's Village of Aurora. Um, because that attorney is the one that helped put together this particular law, and remember. If we, the town. Um, contend, continues down the path of looking at some regulations for short-term rentals. We would probably wanna look at the village model, because there are cases where the, um. Town of Sterling and the village of Fairhaven overlap with property founder, boundaries. So not that we have to have the same. Um, law, but it would make sense to have very similar verbiage. And process, that's just the thought, kind of an upcoming.
Do you know what time that is, that meeting?
I think it's at six o'clock.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the twenty eighth, you said?
Yeah, at the fire hall?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks Judy, thank you for letting me ask Judy to make sure I was giving you accurate information.
Okay, right, wait, uh, what about the pickleball, are you doing that then?
Uh, we are waiting on that to come in and, um, once it comes in, they'll prep the. Uh, pavement for it and install it, we're just waiting right there. It, it should happen.
Yeah, this is very interesting.
Yes.
I'm Marty Boy.
Okay, um, can I get a motion to accept the minutes from July twenty second?
Oh my god, motion. Karen, yes, Charlie?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes. All right, motion to accept the supervisor's report?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Yes, Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes. Okay, uh, correspondence. Um. We got Frank's report. Uh, the proposed law, which we're gonna cover in a moment, clear resolution regarding, uh, the partial exemption. Uh, for seniors. Um, proposed law. Bringing the partial exemption, uh, for some with disabilities, we'll be covering that in the resolutions. Uh, and then just the planning board and ZDA minutes. Also, we have the dates below for the twenty twenty five, uh, budget special meeting dates. Does anybody see a problem with those dates below this point? September twenty third.
Local law, probably, yeah. But, uh.
I know, I know, I know, um, did she not put that in here?
No, I didn't say schedule special meetings, but there are no dates and times suggested.
Each and every, I didn't, I didn't see that in here, we'll have to do that. I don't have that. No. I didn't see that. Yeah, you don't know, well, you'll have to do that, number five?
That's a public hearing.
Yeah, it's not in here. You're definitely.
Yeah.
Okay, good job. Okay, so that isn't. Uh, so. Not passing number six at this point. Okay.
Or it normally start in August?
We schedule in August, starts in September, yeah, that's why.
She said. My reply, she just told me that I don't have any data, we, we have decided on.
We haven't decided.
Yeah, so if we decide on it now, yeah, we should make a resolution to pass those.
Right, but.
Well, we need to make sure we get a circle available. And then Pat Crane would.
Yeah, I mean, we have. I can't, we can't do this. We'll have to do this the next week. Okay.
Do we have a special meeting coming up, so it's gonna have to be.
We do have, uh. And we don't have a special meeting coming in. I mean, we can always hold one. No, we'll, we'll, we'll schedule a special meeting.
Okay, yeah, because our next meeting was September twenty third, that's too late.
No, I, I know, that's why I'm saying we'll schedule a special meeting, just to. Schedule this, so I don't, I don't have the dates and times.
When's Lisa gonna be there? Okay.
But we need to get. Pat and Carl. To.
Well, minimum Pat and me, so.
Right, we need everybody to be able to attend the meetings.
That would be ideal.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we need to have the whole group turn. Okay, um. So we will move on to resolutions, can I get a resolution to pay the audited vouchers?
I'll second. Karen, yes, Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes. Uh, change the September regular meeting to September twenty third at seven P M and authorize. The town clerk to advertise for such meetings.
I'll make that motion.
Well, second that.
Karen, yes, Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes. Uh, resolution to hold a public hearing on local law number two, tax exemption for senior citizens with limited income. On September twenty third at seven oh five P M. And authorize the town clerk to advertise for such.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Karen, yes. Charlie?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes. All right, uh. Resolution to hold a public hearing on local law number three, tax exemption for persons with disabilities who have limited incomes on September twenty third, twenty twenty four. At seven ten P M. Authorize the town clerk to advertise for such hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Karen, yes, Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes. Okay, resolution to hold a public hearing on local law number four to override the tax levy for the twenty twenty five. For twenty twenty five on September twenty third, twenty twenty four, at seven fifteen, to authorize the town clerk to advertise for such hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Well, second that.
Karen? Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes. Okay, uh, number six, we are not gonna address. Uh, number seven, uh, clean-up day, uh, changing this October fifth. For sixth of the Sunday, we want a fifth. Uh, au- authorize. From eight to twelve, and authorize the town clerk to advertise for such day.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Karen? Yes, Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes. Hey, uh, authorize the purchase of Outlook three sixty five licenses. For town employee email users. Now what this is, is this is for, um. So how we all have email addresses. It's switching from Gmail. To Microsoft three sixty five. Email addresses will stay the same, there will be no change to that. Um, but this allows for, um. When you're logged in on that address, so like, when you're sharing files and everything through Microsoft, um, you'd be able to see them on your. Computer, et cetera, where you're at.
For example.
Like if I'm working on a, if I'm working on a Word document, let's say I'm typing it at my computer.
Right.
And I send it to you. Via email. And then, two hours later, I'm on my phone. And I wanna look at that. I just go in my email on my phone, and that document is still there, even though it's a different device. And it picks up right where.
Oh, okay.
Because it's all in the email.
Okay.
It's, it's a new, it's, it's the new. Um, system, Microsoft, they've had it out for about a year. It's, uh, most people are switching to it because it keeps all your documents in one place.
So is it, in other words, you can pull it up on different devices?
As long as you're logged into your email account, or your, your Microsoft account, yes.
Doesn't make it seem like the change. Exactly how it was.
Yeah.
Cause sometimes now you.
So.
Something, it has changed.
Yeah, so, um. For instance, like, if I'm using the document, and I'm logged in on the computer under my Microsoft three sixty five account, so I'm logged in here. Working on an Excel file. I save it. I go home, and I go to my house, and I log in under my Microsoft. Email address. On the account, I bring up that same file, it picks up right where I left it over here, and I could be in California here. And it'll pick up right where I left it. And you can also review documents, so let's say. For example, like, uh. Uh, code enforcement, let's say he's got a document that he needs to look up, that is in his email. He can just, or not even in his email, but just the document that he's got saved in Word. If he's at that house, he can go look it up if he knows what it's, look, look under, and see it, that document where he left it.
Thank you.
Yep, um.
I'll make that motion.
I'm all about taking out all the, second that.
Karen? Yes, Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes. Okay, um. Number nine, be resolved that the town board of the town of Sterling hereby establishes the following standard. As standard workday for elected and appointed. Officials for the purpose of determining workdays worked reportable to the New York State and local employees retirement system. Based on record of activities maintained and submitted by these officials to the clerk of this body. Um. Highway. Eight hours, town clerk eight hours, constable six hours. Bookkeeper six hours, dog control six hours.
I'll make that motion. I'll second. Karen? Yes, Charlie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.